Morning Leader.
Morning, welcome to this meeting of the Executive January Meeting, Happy New Year to you all and I hope you all had a peaceful and restful Christmas. So we'll start with Agenda Item 1 then please, Apologies for Absence.
Thank you Leader, we have apologies from Glenn Garrard, Executive Director, Adult Care and Community Wellbeing and we have Derek Ward, Director of Public Health, attending in his place.
Thank you Derek, welcome. Okay, any declarations of interest please? Not seeing any, so I'll move on to any announcements please by any of us. Not seeing any, so move quickly on to Item 4 which is the minutes of the Executive held on the 6th of December. Is it your wish I assign these as a true and accurate record? Is that agreed? Thank you very much. Okay then, so we move on to Item 5 which is the key decisions, first one of which is the Council Budget 22 for the next financial year. So a bit delayed this year because the government was late in producing the figures, so we're in a little bit of catch-up mode. So obviously we have a debate today about the recommendations which will then go out to consultation and then come back to this Executive in February. Who will then recommend, we will then recommend to the full council a proposed budget. So without further ado, I'll hand over to Andrew, check out, there he is, thank you.
Thank you Leader, yes, so I'm going to do a bit of a double act with Michelle as we normally do on these sort of items, but just by way of introduction, as you said, relatively late issuing of figures by the government this year, plenty of hard work in the immediate period prior to Christmas by the team. But I'm pleased to present a report today that sets out a number of options for you to consider for consultation. And I think it's fair to say that throughout my time as a Chief Finance Officer in local government, it's a pretty extraordinary budget in terms of both the cost pressures that we've experienced this year from the economic context that you're all too clearly aware of, particularly around our inflationary elements, but also as well some of the challenges that we're experiencing responding to those as well. So for the first time as well, we're presenting a set of proposals that would have to, at this stage, because the figures are provisional, use some form of reserves, which again we can refer to in the debate, but I'll hand over to Michelle before she'll come back to me to wrap up at the end, so thank you.
Thank you very much, so this paper's been brought together following the recent announcements from government, namely the Autumn Statement presented by the Chancellor on the 17th of November and the draft local government finance settlement for 23/4 that was published on the 19th of December. These announcements provided more funding than we initially anticipated amidst a background of difficult economic environment and inflation remaining high, including the cost of energy which is having a significant and direct impact on our cost base for delivering services. Whilst providing a settlement for only one year, the government has also set out plans for 24/5, but they have indicated that public spending will slow down after this and have pushed decisions around the funding reforms and austerity measures to the spending review period from 25/6 which creates further uncertainty in our future funding levels amongst a volatile economic environment for the cost of our services. Paragraph 118 to 130, starting on page 18, set out some of the key points from the Autumn Statement and settlement. The key announcement to highlight alongside the additional funding and deferral of reforms around social care to highlight is the change in the referendum limits for council tax to a maximum of no more than 5%, which includes a 2% precept for adult social care. The limit had previously been built being no more than 3% and the medium-term financial summary included in the beginning of the report is based on this 3% level of council tax increase. Paragraphs 1.5, starting on page 16, includes some specific context and advice on the council's financial position from the council's Section 151 Officer Andrew, considering the risks and impact of the council tax options presented in the report. And I'm sure we'll come back to those at the end. Budget process and the medium-term financial plan position, so as in previous years, we've undertaken a full review of existing and emerging cost pressures and savings in order to set a one-year budget only for 23/24. The medium-term financial forecast for the period up to 26/7 is set out in paragraph 1.33, Table B, which is on page 23 of your PAC and that, as I said, is based on 3% council tax increase in each year of the MTFP period. With the assumptions including of our funding and our forecast on our cost pressures and efficiency savings, this table demonstrates that we will have a deficit position of over 10 million in 23/24 and this deficit position continues throughout the medium-term plan period. In terms of our revenue budget, Table C at paragraph 1.38 sets out the position of the revenue budget for 23/4 and full details of all the service cost pressures and savings included for 23/4 are in Appendix A which starts at page 41. Just some key highlights of these, the cost pressures include in pay inflation amount to 64.9 million. Key areas of inflation and cost pressures include pay and pension inflation as we're incorporating the increases from the current financial year as well as the forecast increases for 23/4 and those pressures are around 18 million. Some of the key areas of cost pressures are around the adult care services, so our price inflation and demand at around 18 million as well, highways maintenance contract inflation 5.5 million, energy, street lighting and property costs pressures of around 8 million and school transport currently at 4.2 million. Just a risk that's been identified in the report is whilst we've currently got a pressure in for school transport, there's still some work being undertaken and that figure might be updated before we come back to Executive in February because we're currently seeing quite significant pressures in that area. The savings that have been included amount to around 11 million and these are mainly new grant income and grant utilisation to offset costs with some cost efficiencies but no service reductions. Due to the late notice of the change in the referendum limit, the report sets out options for consideration regarding our council tax and the council tax options are included in the report from page 30. So the local government settlement set the referendum limit to a maximum of 3% increase for the general rate and 2% increase for the adult social care precept for next year. The report considers options of an increase of 2.99%, 3.99% and 4.99% with a 2% adult care precept being included in each option and the remaining increase being the general rate. Table F on page 31 sets out the impact on our medium-term plan for each option and as said previously, the earlier MTFP calc's were based on a 2.99% increase which is shown in Option A in the table. The options also include the impact of the increases on the band-decouncil tax charge for individual households for information, but as you can see, all of the options still require the use of reserves to set a balanced budget. At the Option 1, Option A, the 2.99%, the deficit position is 10.3 million next year with a total use of reserves required of 45 million over the period and that reduces down by Option C at 4.99% to a use of 15 million over the four-year period. The financial risks are also set out in the report mainly based on economic context and inflation, uncertainty of funding beyond 24/5 and delivery of future year savings and ongoing demand for services. There is also a risk around council tax collection and we work closely with our districts to understand the implications of that as we go through the process. There is a section on reserves at paragraph 1.7, page 33 and the narrative provided by the Section 151 Officer sets out a prudent level of reserve to maintain for financial volatility and the requirement of drawing down of these reserves will be dependent on the funding available to the council which is very much linked to the council tax level set. A review of existing earmarked reserves has identified three reserves that are no longer required for their original purpose which were detailed in paragraph 1.74 which total 8.7 million and these can be used to offset any budget shortfall or repurposed for any other activity. It's just worth noting that earmarked reserves are cash balances and therefore can only be used once rather than for year-on-year costs. There is a short section on capital in the report, in line with our capital strategy, we've updated our 10-year capital programme and that's detailed in the report at Appendix B. Whilst the programme's been extended, no new major schemes have been added to the programme with updates being included to provide for the existing major schemes namely Grantham Southern Relief Road and North Hycam Relief Road and the specialist school provision mainly to reflect inflationary increases on these major schemes. So at that point, I'll hand back if Andrew wants to say more.
Yeah, thanks Michelle, thanks Leader. So yeah, so Michelle referred to a part of the report where we set out some economic context and whilst we are recommending that the council set to one-year budget only this year given the uncertainty that Michelle talked about in terms of funding figures for next year, 25/26 does appear to be a pretty key year in terms of general levels of unpredictability in terms of what the future financial envelope of the council will look like and 1.7 in the report sets out some of those, but clearly there will have been a general election by that point. We still have the uncertainty around the social care funding reforms. Still, as we've talked about recently, delays, continued delays around the fair funding reform as well as other issues that could further worsen the figures that we set out in the report. So whilst we are talking about a one-year report, we can't lose sight of what's happening further down the line. So my advice as set out in the report is to set the maximum amount of council tax. Probably doesn't come as a surprise to get that advice. Clearly, any budget that relies on reserves to balance, and we haven't used reserves to actually balance the final position for a number of years now, we need to look at the medium-term position and if the use of reserves is particularly growing during that period, we need to ensure that we set what is a sustainable rate of council tax and a sustainable budget. So that's my advice, albeit we do acknowledge that in the wider, you know, economic environment, clearly householders are struggling, government's put significant support in for that and there's clearly a debate to be had over the next month through the consultation period around what's, you know, what a correct level of council tax is to set for next year. So I'm happy to pause there and open it up to questions or debate if that's okay.
Thank you very much, can I just bring you back to, you talked about the government's budget if you like, can you just give us a bit more, because my understanding is that they are, they've front-loaded the tax rises but backloaded the savings. So from what you understand, after the next two years where you seem to be saying there is a degree of certainty, what will be, what do we know what's going to be the situation after that?
Yeah, well after the 25/26 financial period, pretty much any funding that is in the spending review tables is pretty much flat or cash flat if that makes sense, so not expecting to see any more growth. Now the concern is if the economic circumstances, I guess, deepen and lengthen and we're expecting a recession to last a period of time now based on what the Monetary Policy Committee and the Office of Budget Responsibility are indicating based on the economic indicators. The depth and length of that could have a significant impact on those figures too. Interest rates are also a consideration, government borrowing if that increases in cost significantly compared to where it's at now again would have a worsening impact on those figures, so definitely one to keep a close and watchful eye upon in terms of our own financial planning.
Thank you, and in terms of inflation, obviously currently at 10%, projected to come down to. So in these figures you've produced, what is your presumption on inflation for next financial year? And has it been accounted, has it been, have departments been given an allocation to cover that?
So a number of our major contracts are based on historic inflation, so we know what inflation we should be setting our budgets for for next year in some of the core contracts, so that the Circo Vinci contracts etcetera. The adult care is probably where it's impacting most and they're dealing with national living wage, so we've included increases based around national living wage and the increase that that impacts on those contracts. I think we've still got our contingency set at six and a half million pounds so we can deal with any growth in the year using that. We've increased our pay inflation expectations, I think we've got that in at 4% for next year but obviously that's still something that needs to be negotiated. So we've dealt with individual services based on what we best know. We get information from Espo around the energy, so there is some tailing off of the energy costs and the growth of the energy costs, so that's reflected in the budgets as well. So we've kind of dealt with it on an individual basis but we've obviously also got the contingency to deal with any spikes. The construction industry also presents its own inflation index, so we've used that for working on the highways maintenance contract.
I'd just add as well, on a point of sensitivity about the energy costs as well, so we've seen an extraordinary rise in those and we've talked about it in previous meetings, eight million region. And that tailing off, if that wasn't to happen, that's the sensitivity of, you know, a continued year of energy inflation would potentially add, you know, a further eight million pounds gap on the third year in the budget plan at the moment. So that's when I'm talking about the uncertainty as a result of some of those factors. They're the sort of variation in figures that we're potentially looking at at the moment.
Thank you, questions, comments please, anybody? Yes, councillor Davies.
Thank you, two points really, one is, I think the public would rightly expect, despite the austere times, to be seeking and looking for savings. So recognising that we've got significant cost pressures there that we just alluded to in terms of inflation, we still have got savings targets in there, haven't we? How confident are we that they're going to be met allowing for everything else? And my second point, coming back to the reserves, because we often get a bad press on this, particularly from our Members of Parliament who don't seem very good at reading balance sheets. What we're basically saying is that if we take the 2.99 plus 2 route, our bandwidth will disappear within about four years. So at the end of that four years, if nothing else changes, we won't have a volatility reserve left. So the, you know, the rain's coming through the ceiling at the time, isn't it?
Yeah, thanks councillor Davies, so yeah, on the savings front, we've been pursuing a sort of mixed economy of savings for a number of years now, so we've been focusing on corporate-based savings related to the way we do things, that's better use of technology, reducing administrative overheads and they're still, they're continuing to feed through into this budget and beyond. We've also started to bring in a, like an annual efficiency-type target process which stretches over the first three years of the plan, but definitely something that we need to continue to make sure that we, you know, as you say, continue to be as effective and efficient as possible. But yeah, going back to the reserves question, yeah, the rate, the run rate of the use of the reserve at the lower end of the council tax would eat away the ability to, I guess, create capacity to change the organisation should 25/26 onwards be at the worst end of the potential projections that we set out in the report.
Thank you, because I note in the report, your professional advice is kind of three to four years' worth of deficit funding within the volatility reserve. So what I think you're saying is that if we were to adopt that approach and then something, i.e. dramatic happens, say for example the recession continues or there's a significant drop of funding, we won't have the money in place to kind of manage that decline and we'd be in quite a dire position as some of the authorities have had to do of almost laying people off overnight.
Yeah, and I think that's the general premise of having that reserve, it was set up well before my time and I think the council made the right decision in setting up and creating the principle for that. But other councils I've worked at and other councils and I, you know, I have regular networks of, you know, chief finance officers and what have you. As we've experienced this challenge through the autumn, they've been going through potential creating cuts packages because they haven't got that bandwidth to, you know, create time, the wait and see and then plan accordingly. And, you know, there is an element of the excellent services that this council provides here. Councils can lose that ability to provide those excellent services very quickly if they are in that cuts mindset and you play that catch-up. So it's a very sound financial management by the council that council's had for a long time and should continue to be considered in any decision-making that the council takes.
Yeah, thank you for that, just on, but obviously as you, in English, basically reserves can only be used once and you can do it but obviously you come into a situation in the end where you run out of road whereas of course if your council tax is sort of embedded, that's how the system works. So that's the sort of dilemma we've got, isn't it? Because we want, we understand, we want to keep council tax as low as possible but at the same time understand that the financial pressures that taxpayers are under, but at the same time, we've got to look to the future. Can you just, any information regarding the fair funding, which obviously the national fair funding which has been a campaign for us for some time? And also the issue about, obviously the campaign on getting back our 12 million pounds from highways, what your understanding of the national situation with that please?
Okay, thank you Leader, so our understanding is that the fair funding review is put beyond that 25/26 period, so any potential changes to our core funding elements have been pushed beyond that period. So as I said, when I refer to uncertainty, that's another element amongst that suite of issues that we need to think about in that year. Just something that's impacted us slightly this year, that hasn't been an issue in the previous years and again it comes around to council tax and how the government compensates us for those sort of things. So we are a low taxing authority, the second lowest of all of the county councils in the country. In recent years, in the grant funding that the government have provided us for social care and for us providing social care has been equalised for that lower council tax that we've set, albeit the government have started to change the way or signal a change away from the way that they do that as well. So we may ultimately be penalised for that, but again, that's something that the fair funding should take account of when it does eventually come along. In terms of the highways funding, the understanding at the time when it was announced last February/March time was that would last the period, i.e. not receiving any more than we did, would last the period of the spending review which is again up to the 25/26 period. I don't know whether colleagues have got anything to add to that, but that was the understanding at the time.
Yeah, so, but in terms of, because obviously last year we added, we put the council tax up more to compensate for that and obviously we still had to find about 6 million. So that 12 million is embedded in, is it embedded in the figures you're presenting us with?
Yeah, that's correct Leader, yeah, sorry, yeah.
We will maintain, I mean there's still pressures as we're well aware and, you know, obviously it's something we are aware of as well, the pressure and, you know, it's something we may have to look at when we'll see what the consultation comes back with in terms of is there anything further we can do in terms of addressing those issues? Other comments please? Yes councillor Davies, yeah?
Just on the highways part, I think the point you make Leader is valid, that the money can only be spent once and I think what, my frustration, and we see it a lot in the press sometimes from other political organisations, is that there's this sense that the money can be spent and spent and spent and respent. And, you know, we are managing, almost managing decline in the highway network as it is, we're bolstering the government shortfall in the short term, but as we can see, the figures are really stark, you know, three or four years down the line and that option is gone. So I think we do need to use this opportunity to put significant amounts of pressure onto Westminster to kind of well wake up and smell the coffee. And I have just received some very disappointing news from the Road Minister saying that basically we've never had it so good, is his latest view. But I will share that with colleagues.
I think we'll move swiftly on from that, so I don't know, I think perhaps they ought to come and drive around, I don't know where the new roads minister, where they represent, but perhaps they don't spend enough time in their constituency. Councillor Bradwell.
Well, just on that, Mr Chairman, I could take them to lots of little roads with which you feel like you're falling into pits, so yes, I think we need to invite him, Richard. I was just going to say, I mean, obviously Andrew has mentioned that the council offers very, we offer good services to residents of Lincolnshire and I think with the financial prudency that we've had, I mean, this all, it all helps in, you know, being able to provide those services. Lots of councils who are having problems with their budgets and that will be because of issues they've got, whether that's with children's services, adults or whatever. And I think, you know, we have tried very hard and we have been very prudent. I mean, every year we'll have savings targets to make and we manage to do that but still maintain that quality of service to, for residents. And I think, you know, that's not easy to do. I think, you know, when we go out and we're going to ask the public what the council tax rate, you know, their view on that. But actually, you know, none of what we do, I don't think is that easy, but we do manage to offer the very best services and I think, you know, that's something that we should credit ourselves with as a council, that we are able to do that at the moment. I understand what you're saying, in years to come, we're going to have to sit down and think how we re-look at delivering services, but I just think that actually we manage very well here when you talk to colleagues around the country and that. I mean, I sit on the LGA for children's and many councils will be struggling to set their budgets for children's this year because of the issues that they've had.
I think we are in a minority, most councils have had an in-year deficit which in other words, they've had to manage that and they start the next financial year and in, on the back foot shall we say. So, you know, it is hard sometimes being prudent and, you know, not seem to be as generous as others but in the long term, I'm very confident that is the more sensible and sustainable approach. Right, further questions, comments please? I just wonder on the capital programme, and I'll give the finance people a bit of a rest, so it's mostly education and highways stuff, can we just have a, how confident are we that you are you, that you will deliver the allocations which you will be given if this budget is approved, that we will actually deliver on time? Start with you Heather.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. We have benefited from a grant that's come through from the Department of Education for High Needs Capital Programme and that for us has given us the confidence that we'll be able to manage the inflation within our building specialist communities of schools and still deliver the places that we know we desperately need for children who require a special school place, but allow us to use that grant to fund that inflation. So we are confident that we've built in expectations around inflation into that programme and we are nearing the end of that programme. You'll remember that was a five-year programme, really ambitious, touching huge parts of Lincolnshire to ensure that we had enough specialist provision that was up to the right standard, had the right kind of building for some of the equipment and resources that those children have now. And we're really confident as we near the end of that programme that we're going to be able to complete that within the allocated budget within the paper. Thank you.
So as you're aware, the current progress on the Grantham project has been delayed for a number of reasons. We're now in a situation where that is being worked through with a degree of confidence regarding the revised programme and the revised budget and obviously over the last few months, you've seen further work on-site with the peers going in for the bridge. In terms of the North Hycam Relief Road, we're in a situation where through the design and build contract, there are still key decision points that the authority would have to make if it looks like the inflationary pressures are getting away from ourselves and therefore the cost of the scheme is going to be prohibitive. At this moment in time, there is very little or no likelihood of any further money coming from DFTs, so any shortfall or increase in budget would always fall back to ourselves as the county council at this moment in time.
Thank you. Further comments, questions please? Yes, Mrs Wally.
Thank you, it's slightly hypothetical, but what sort of modelling have we done, particularly around our older residents? And I'm thinking about Covid in that in a very simplistic way, have we got a significant element of our population who are probably not as healthy as they might have been had Covid not come along and is that likely to put more pressure on our adult social care as, you know, as the years move on? And are we, bearing in mind that we've been very fortunate to have support from government as far as Covid is concerned, that's not going to last forever, so it's that sort of, are we mindful that we might have people coming into our system sooner than they might have done, say five years ago?
Thank you, there isn't any modelling that has been done nationally as far as I'm aware. We do know that across Lincolnshire, we've got an older population and therefore we could have been disproportionately hit but we've also had a really high uptake of Covid vaccine which has offset that impact as you're aware, councillor Wally. So generally, I think we're in a similar position as to the rest of the country. We are seeing as, again you're aware, a bigger impact on health services, particularly at the moment as we always do through Christmas and New Year. The longer-term impacts in terms of social care and the costs, we aren't seeing yet or if we are seeing it, we've not got a direct line of sight back to Covid, but it's something we're keeping a really close eye on. I think the other, the other side of this is, before we had the vaccine, we were seeing a lot of excess mortality, a lot of extra deaths and obviously that was a real concern, that's tailored off from Covid but has continued in terms of other reasons for excess deaths. A lot of that may be a lack of access to NHS services. So it's something we're keeping a really close eye on, we're working with the trust and we'll have to see what the potential impacts will be.
Just coming back to savings, obviously the 11 million there, but there are other savings which have been previously agreed in previous budgets, which are you able to remember what they are? remember what they are? There's quite substantial, which are already in the system and have to be delivered next financial year as well.
Yeah, thanks, leader. Yeah, so I've referred to a couple of them in in reference to councillor Davies' question, but we've made just under two million pounds of savings from the council's administration budget pretty much over the last couple of years. We made one million pounds of savings related to the smarter working initiative. So that's the working smarter in the hybrid working model post-Covid. There's a number of savings profiled for a better use of buildings or less use of buildings, I guess, in in future years, again, amounting to over a million pounds. And then a number of other savings related to our, well, the way the way we work with our customers essentially, so, you know, enhancing the digital means by which we we work, work with our customers. Again, numerous million pounds related to that. And on top of that, clearly then, there's a number of the efficiency savings that are referred to, which is a further six million pounds of doing things more efficiently, and that's over the three years of the financial plan, amongst others. I don't know if Michelle's got anything to add to that one.
Yeah, so it is, you know, I think you have some time to look at these things and not just in the single year. Okay, unless I've got any further contributions, yes, councillor Davies?
Thanks, Chairman. Just a quick thought, Andrew, on energy costs. Obviously, as you know, the cap is going to be going up again in terms of the impact on businesses and residential customers. And whilst we have fixed term agreements, you know, further down the line, by the looks of it, 25, 26 will probably be when we end up with the changes to energy costs really impacting on the council. So have you got any thoughts on that? I don't think there's much we can do to avoid the pressure. The other point I would quickly touch on is business rate collection. It's very disappointing to see in the report, you've had no detail from any of our district colleagues in terms of collection rates. It's quite clear that businesses who are struggling will make decisions in this month normally, whether they can get through into the next quarter, into the next year. So it's disappointing we don't have at least an indication. I note in the report, you talk about a minor slippage on collection. But how do you, do you think that's realistic? Because listening to people out there, there's some real concerns about how businesses will be able to start the year from April onwards with rising energy costs as caps are raised on them. So just some thoughts then.
So to start with the first question on energy, clearly, we've come through a period quite significant, over quite significant period of time where it's been relatively cheap and not really something that we typically be concerned about as a finance team or a wider council. We've clearly ramped up the extent and depth of monitoring on that now. So as I as I referred to earlier, I think, as you say, 25, 26 is a concerning year because at the moment, the intel that we're getting is that the cost will tail off and therefore won't be as much of a problem for us. But if it continues, that inflationary impact continues, it will create us further challenges, as I say, up to the order of about eight million pounds potentially in terms of, in terms of the gap that we've got set out from 25, 26 onwards. In terms of business rates, the date that we get the forms and the returns back from the districts is set statutorily for the 31st of January. So there is a, there is a mitigation for that. We do talk to the districts regularly. Michelle represents us in the in the chief finance officer meetings with the districts, and they do monitor the collection rates and, you know, collection fund balances and what have you. So there is intel on that, albeit, as you say, the will, and the experiences are from the two, particularly 2008, there is, there was a lag at that point and then in terms of the impact of collection rates on council tax and business rates. So it'd be interesting to see what that lag is now and whether the districts are accounting for that when we receive the returns in, at the end of January. But as I say, that is still a major potential variable in terms of the figures that we've presented in the report today as well, in terms of what we get back from the district. So when we return to you in February, we'll be able to provide an update on that too.
Further comments, questions, please? Okay, well, the recommendations there are on page 14, paragraph three there. So basically, the the budget, whatever happens, we are accounting for inflation as we understand it. There is some savings proposed and also an increase of council tax. And notwithstanding the clear advice from the, from our chief finance officer or treasurer that prudently, on a purely financial basis, that 5%, three, that's 2% adult care plus 3% base would be, would be the most prudent financial option. I would propose that we actually do consult on three options there, which are on the page there, which is basically a balance between putting the council tax up between 3% to 5%. And obviously, then there'll be an adjustment to how much reserves is taken on that. So I think that's, which is normally at this this meeting, we would come up with one proposal. Because of the lateness of the announcement, also, there are still some imponderables there. I think it'd be prudent to just see what the public make of that or consultees, and then we'll be able to come back later in a month's time with a firm proposal on those. But I don't think you would suggest going below 3% because that would really, would be, you know, quite almost unsustainable, I think is fair. So with that, are you then happy to, with with those recommendations on pages 13 and 14, effectively giving some options which could be consulted on? Is that agreed? Thank you. Okay, then, we'll move then on to recommissioning the social care client information system.
Thank you, good morning. The Social Care Case Management System contract is due to end in January 2024. This is currently the Mosaic system, which is owned by the Access Group. The system records all work and engagement activity with the council's clients and holds and shares information regarding all services that the council provides to vulnerable children and adults. The Mosaic system went live in December 2016, and all extensions to that contract have been exhausted. We now need to recommission and decide upon the way forward. As the Mosaic system is still very much fit for purpose and to continue to build on the extensive developments already made, the recommendation is to enter into a direct award with the Access Group for the Mosaic platform. This would also provide the least disruption to staff and implementation costs incurred. This would be achieved using the Crown Commercial Service Framework Agreement for data applications and solutions and would allow up to a maximum of seven-year contract. Included in other options considered were to do nothing, which wouldn't be recommended as the council would be out of contract and vulnerable to uncontrollable costs and system insecurity issues. Or bespoke tender exercise, which again is not recommended due to the significant risk to the service delivery arising from the uncoupling of the existing system and the achievement of equally significant service enhancements to offset this is highly unlikely. Thank you, and open up for any questions or discussions.
Thank you. I'll just move on to scrutiny comments, which are on page 66 of the report and 65. And councillor Parker is here to summarise, please.
Excuse me, very briefly, there's a report here, and it was well set out by the officer. The marketplace has been explored, the Mosaic system has been retained but part of the Crown Commercial Services Framework, and the costings are in the circumstances relatively reasonable. So we supported the recommendation coming from officers.
Comments, questions, please? Okay, well, it would seem to be pragmatic and the increase in the actual cost of running the system would seem to be, and in terms of, I don't know what savings, Andrew, are projected on the system working even better in the future. Do we have any targets for that?
In terms of the actual system itself, we are looking around, reviewing around the system and how the support to that within our services around managing it and the option for savings and that, look around how we utilise better forms and automation so that we can reduce the amount of burden in updating the system itself. So Louisa and Marco with me today are looking around that and the opportunities for creating ongoing efficiencies linked into the comments Andrew made earlier in the the previous agenda item.
Just come in as well, just, sorry, also looking at the connectivity to the system and ways that we can smarten that up for direct links to the Access Group system directly without the pressure on our existing network.
Yeah, thank you, just to come in as well. When we first introduced Mosaic into the system, predominantly for children's and adults, we used it primarily for the social care system. And over the last sort of five to eight years, we've rationalised and put more and more of our data, our education data, our special educational needs data, our elective home education data. So now there is one view of that child's record or the adult care record. So a lot of that work to sort of streamline has already happened. As Andrew has said, I think there's more that we can do in terms of the maintenance support around that and get much better automation so that we can, you know, send reports directly to clients and to families. So I think there is more that we can do. But the way that we've developed Mosaic is that we do have sort of a single view of the child and adult. So from a practice perspective, there's lots of benefits to that.
So in terms of sort of scrutinising what you're doing to sort of streamline and make it more efficient, obviously that will be coming forward. I'm not sure where to, whether it's adults or overview and scrutiny, but I think there is an issue there. We need to be reassured that we are using a system to its best uses and not only improving the service, but also saving money as well. That's just something that probably does need to be put into the scrutiny programme somewhere.
Yes, I mean, I think where it would most appropriately fit is through the digital strategy work that we're doing to include the projects into that. And obviously, then that would be reported through the various different scrutinises through the transformation programme.
Okay, thank you for that. Any further? Would seem to be, the decision would seem to be fairly straightforward. So recommendations are there somewhere on page, I can't remember what page we're on. Anyway, they are there. Are those recommendations agreed then, please? Is that agreed? Thank you. Let me move on to item seven, final report, which is Director of Public Health's annual report. It's a good job you're here, Derek, isn't it? That's a bit of luck. So Derek, off you go. Thank you.
Thank you, leader. I'll wait for everybody to leave. I'm used to it. I won't take the walkouts personally. Well, I'll try and keep this high level. I'll I'll take it as as read in terms of everybody's had a look through the report. So just to to summarise, as as everybody will be aware, the Chief Medical Officer highlighted some of the challenges of health and care in coastal communities in his annual report. And Professor Witte came to Lincolnshire, actually just before Covid hit, and and we took him around the county. He experienced the roads at the same time there, in terms of understanding how how much of a challenge it is to deliver health and care services in a large rural dispersed population. In his CMO report in 2021, he did make the point that, and one of his recommendations was about understanding the complexity of delivering health and care services in coastal communities better and making sure that we communicate those complexities to service deliverers and service commissioners better. And in light of that, I thought it was a good idea to to explore that in more detail. Directors of Public Health have a statutory responsibility to write an annual report, which is what this is, and councils have a statutory responsibility to to publish it. And this year's annual report is is my first one as the Director of Public Health across all three upper tier authorities across Greater Lincolnshire, two of which are actually mentioned in the CMO report. So it was both Lincolnshire and actually North East Lincolnshire that were that were mentioned in the CMO report. What we did with this year's annual report, and I'll just just pull out the the headlines and then happy to answer any questions, is we looked across Greater Lincolnshire, so North Lincolnshire, North East Lincolnshire and Lincolnshire County Council areas, covering about 1.1 million people. And we broke it down to the smallest geography that we get reasonable data for, which is lower super output area, which is why everybody left just before. I'll try not to get too techie. Broke it down to the lowest level possible. And then based on CMO's report and our understanding of of what Greater Lincolnshire looks like, we started to build it back up again in a way that we believe, and I believe, is going to be helpful for for service provision. And by doing that, what what we've arrived at is, in effect, characterising Greater Lincolnshire into four core areas. The urban centres, of which Lincoln is one, urban industrial centres, places like Scunthorpe and Grimsby, coastal communities and rural and market towns. And each has particular characteristics, each has particular challenges in terms of health and care and particular opportunities. And that's what the 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 DPA annual report provides. There are some maps in there that, you know, visually show those areas. They also show the areas that that sit around those four different characteristics. And one of the interesting areas that comes out here is, for example, Gainsborough is linked very closely to to Scunthorpe in terms of the characteristics and and the the industry that they have. What you'll see there around, as we would know, Skegness has quite a large area around it, which is coastal, but actually Mabelthorpe is very, very tightly knitted within a wider coastal community, which means means delivering services, and we find this with our health services particularly, is quite a challenge because you've got a particular demographic in a coastal area within what is a very rural environment, which means it's challenged just in and of itself. And then, of course, we've got the sea on the other side, so you can only look at 180 degrees in terms of delivering services. In the report, we pull out some of the key characteristics of each of those four areas. So urban centre communities tend to be younger, tend to be economically active, generally have decent housing. Urban industrial communities, fairly similar, but have more inbuilt challenges in terms of health and social care because of those heavy industries. Coastal communities tend to be older communities, as I've just articulated, and delivering care is particularly difficult, but they do have access to green and blue spaces that has a real positive impact. And our rural and market towns generally are are more affluent areas, but but some of the 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 dispersed communities and and the isolation is, are some of the key challenges, especially in terms of access to health services. What we hope to do with this is, as well as bringing it here, we'll be taking it through our health and care partners, discussing it with the chief execs of the of the NHS, so that we can start to consider how we deliver our services and deliver differently, depending on the nature of the place that we deliver. If we want to cover the the population of Lincoln, then having services delivered from the centre of Lincoln is is generally fairly straightforward because it's a small geography with 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 high density. If we want to cover the whole east coast, then we have to change our service delivery model. And that's certainly something that I'll be pushing through as part of the recommendations for the annual report. That's the headlines, I won't go into any more detail. Hopefully, that's enough. Very happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. I thought it was really a fascinating report, how the four different areas and how it's not just for sort of your, for the public health area, but for all services. It just quite does demonstrate there are different breakdowns of communities and their needs and and the and the benefits they have there. So I thought it was really useful and quite a different way of looking at how the whole of Lincolnshire or Greater Lincolnshire is is sort of set up, if you like. So councillor Bradwell.
Your last one was interesting, but this is probably a little more interesting. So you're getting better year on year. No, but I was just wondering though, because we've got other, so like, we've got Norfolk, Suffolk, and I just wondered, have have we thought about putting our, the information here on top of, like Norfolk? And I know probably Norfolk hasn't got the industri, I don't think they've got the industrial bit that we've got sort of in Lincolnshire or especially in Greater Lincolnshire. But I was just wondering about their health issues, because very rural and market towns as well. And I, and it was just interesting to me that, and it might be a bit too much to ask. But I just wondered whether we would see a lot more, a lot of difference, or are they in better health than we are?
Yeah, it's a, it's a really good question, councillor Bradwell. We we have, through the Association of Directors of Public Health, so that's my sort of national body, we have a group that that are directors of public health who who support rural and coastal communities. So we've got a network there that I co-chair. So it's certainly something that I could take through that group and we could look at the methodology we've used and whether other places might be interested. In terms of Norfolk, I know generally they they, obviously broad brush, they have, there are more affluent populations, especially along the coast generally, and generally in better health. And and that is a function of people retiring from London, from more service industries to to North Norfolk. I think there are, and this isn't a public health issue, this is a wider economic opportunity, and we do mention it in the report. and we do mention it in the report, people who can work from home more as we roll out broadband across Lincolnshire, there's an opportunity there to attract more inward investment and people moving from more, you know, urban areas who are healthier and also have a greater income into Lincolnshire because of the beautiful countryside, we've got the access to green and blue space, the really good services and schools that we provide, I think they're real opportunities potentially as well. Not core within the DPA report, but certainly opportunities for Greater Lincolnshire.
Thank you. This is, this is thanks to Google, I'll warn you now, Derek, and talk about a little knowledge being a dangerous thing. You mentioned about poor air quality and referenced not just the urban areas but the agricultural areas. So pop down this rabbit hole of the air quality management areas, which DEFRA throws up, and actually councillor Bradwell's just mentioned Norfolk, that we've only got, I think, two test, not testing stations, but stations anyway, that are taking notice, it looks like, in Lincolnshire, whereas Norfolk seemed to have an awful lot more. Is it, are we in a position to request more? Because if it's a concern, we really need to be on top of it, or am I just on a bit of a knowledge, a little bit of knowledge is a dangerous thing?
Thank you councillor Ollie. I think we mention it in the report because it is something that DEFRA are aware of, and they mention particularly in large rural counties that are predominantly agricultural, which is obviously a large swathe of Lincolnshire, some challenges that can come about from nitrogen compounds specifically. But it's only a very passing comment in the report because it's, I don't think, when you look at the breadth and depth of the challenges that we have, not least in terms of access to services, I would say they are far more pertinent and important to the people of Lincolnshire than air quality. So we mention it. If we do find that there are particular challenges around air quality, and there's lots of different reasons that that might happen, including in our urban areas, then we can deploy some mobile air quality monitoring equipment, it's something that we do with Andy's team and also with our district councils through the environmental health teams. But it's not a significant concern for me, so it's not something that I'm flagging up in this report, but it is something, given where DEFRA are, it was worth cross-referencing, I guess, and happy to catch up with you outside of this meeting and go through it in a bit more detail.
To the best of our knowledge, there is no issue of national air quality, air nitrogen or any other pollutants significantly altering the air quality of anywhere in Lincolnshire, is there? Or is, I know you explained why you mentioned it, but I suppose the blunt question is, is there a problem or isn't there in Lincolnshire with air quality? I suppose, obviously there, I'm not talking about water or other.
Yeah, there is no specific challenge within Lincolnshire around air quality. I think to use the word that we've used today quite a lot, it would be, it is prudent, and as the Director of Public Health, it's prudent for me to keep an eye on something like that, especially when DEFRA make the link with large farming and agricultural areas, and I think it would be remiss not to mention it in a report like this, but it is not by any way, shape or form a key driver, and it's not something I'm concerned about. My focus within this report is to make sure that our services and the people that are delivering those services recognise the variation across Lincolnshire, Greater Lincolnshire, and the different communities that need to serve. That's a far, far more important recommendation from this report, and as you'll see, it's not even in the recommendations of the report around air quality. It's about us understanding that our coastal communities are very different to the communities in Grimsby or Scunthorpe and describing how and why, and then me picking that up and working with partners to make sure we start to change our service delivery to meet those differences.
That's fine, because I think we need to, because obviously from the other perspective, agriculture is the main business industry in Lincolnshire, so we just need to be careful that we don't, you know, we don't cause confidence to fall because of something which isn't actually an issue. So understand where you are. Because DEFRA, of course, they drop the farming, the F doesn't stand for farming, and you sometimes wonder who is, I don't think championing agriculture is, agriculture industry is seen as one of their priorities, which is a bit strange, but there we go, all these, loads of the times you live in. Councillor Davy.
Thank you Leader, and thank you Derek for the report, I think it's really good you focused on these four different areas, and as a coastal member, I'm just going to talk briefly on the coast, I think your report absolutely picks up the challenges of the coast, and you've referred to economic opportunity as people retire and move into the area from the south, but that economic opportunity creates a further challenge as those people price out of the market, young people who we need to operate in the care sector, operate in the hospitality sector, so they end up moving into the urban centres or the market towns, and we end up with a repeating cycle of problems. So I think there is challenge around that, about how we're going to address that through not just the network you deal with, but how we address it in terms of housing growth in coastal areas, which is, you know, is restricted, and do we really want to see everyone living in caravans all year round, which are fine in the summertime, but maybe not so great when it's minus five outside as it was before Christmas? So it's about making sure that we've got a mixed economy that can help you deliver the long-term plan. One of the things I would pick up, I wonder if health generally responds correctly to planning applications, particularly in the coastal areas, in terms of their ask to supply services, particularly, you know, if you're building, you know, great big caravan sites that are open all year round, they put pressure on services, all development puts pressure on services, so you have to mitigate that. And I wonder if health is doing enough to make sure it gets the right response in terms of major planning applications, whether it's housing or elsewhere or other kinds.
As you're aware, the observations on planning applications, the consultee processes, they go through to the core or the key sort of service areas that have a view and an opinion. There are very few elements of what the county council does that as a statutory consultee, and therefore the view or the weight that's added to those by the district when they're determining the planning applications, is open to different degrees of priority, I suppose. Often the demands and expectations from a health perspective are in relation to services, the provision of capacity in the system, and they all fall back into the issue regarding the available monies through section 106 contributions, and the districts have a priority ranking order of how they deal with those things, and often some of the health provision aren't necessarily the priority that's given to it. On top of that, across the east coast in particular, we're all aware of the issues of actually the recruitment into those sectors, so having a building to provide services in doesn't automatically get to the enhanced services because if you can't provide dentists, doctors, et cetera, you run the risk of having empty buildings. We are aware of obviously some initiatives that are being pursued on the coast to try and fill those gaps, but even those are fraught with dangers and difficulties of actually being able to get the right capacity into those service areas.
Thank you for that, thank you. I mean, in terms of beyond, sorry Derek, carry on.
Just a quick point on the economic activity and having people to work in health and care services that we need down the coast, absolutely a key issue, and one of the things that jumps out from the report, I think, is when you look at our urban areas, roughly seven out of 10 people are economically active, so they're in the labour market. When you look at our coastal communities, less than half, and this isn't people who are retired, this is people who are economically inactive. A lot of that half of people who aren't are because they are living with long-term conditions, and I think the work that we want to pick up with our NHS colleagues is about how can we support those people who want to become economically active, who might have cardiovascular disease, heart disease, or they might have other conditions, you know, bad backs, things like that. How can we help them to manage those conditions so that they can be economically active again? Because that's just a win for everybody in that scenario, and that's a real opportunity, I think, but it's going to take time. And part of the reason for writing the report was to surface some of those issues, because as you said, we're going to really struggle to bring people in, but if we can mobilise the people who are already there and get them back into the labour market, that can be a real benefit for everybody.
Thank you Leader. A lot of these sort of coastal resorts, people come from outside the county, and obviously we've got the data to sort of back up that and everything else, but does anyone look at this sort of, the figures, say, and I'm going to give some examples, let's say, 100 people come from Nottingham to Mabel Thorpe, 50% of them people have COPD, does anyone actually go back to sort of that particular area and see what sort of prevention or stuff is actually occurring at that, in some respects, the host authority, without sounding too sort of, you see where I'm coming from?
We do have that data and there's actually, there's technical annexes that sit behind this report that show some of those data, so you're absolutely right councillor McNally, we do know where some of the inward migration is coming from, and they tend to be more working class, heavy industry areas and coming into the area. Exactly what we can do about the, so the prevention, the public health offer and the NHS offer in those areas before people can come in, come into Lincolnshire, is certainly a conversation I can have, but as we talked about with the budget and the finance challenges, I think a lot of those authorities are particularly stretched already. So I think it is something that we want to raise awareness and push back, but it's probably also a national debate, and probably want to pick up through that coastal and rural group that we have through the Association of Directors of Public Health.
Yeah, I think we're living with a lot on the east coast with Mabel Thorpe and Chapel, St Leonard's and Inglemals of our ex-mining community, so we are living with a lot of industrial diseases now that people retired 20, 30 years ago from mining, and that's what we're left with, not only mining, the steelworks, so that's what we are finding now on the east coast, isn't it? So basically, they are, that will die out, so we've got to encourage people to migrate to our coast, if they're going to, from south or from more, if you look at people who migrate, we've done this, haven't we, we've looked at our county, people migrate from the south, maybe up to Horn Castle, Woodall, around there. It's very nice, yes. Our east coast has been mainly from Nottingham, Leicester, because they bought the caravans there and they retired there, and that is the issues that we have now on the east coast with all the diseases that we've got there and the lungs and everything else. So we do have huge problems there that we have to deal with. But they, it is now about taking those communities and basically, I suppose, not upgrading them, but, I don't quite know what the word is, making them more, making them nicer to live there, which is what obviously Mabel Thorpe and Skegness are trying to do at the moment.
Yeah, thank you, Gemma. It just, it's something that, rather than Lincolnshire reacting to a so-called problem in a Pacific area, it's something that we ought to really be delving into and seeing if there's something that either we can do or other authorities can do to sort of help them out and see where the problem is actually coming from to start with, rather than just saying, we've got a problem in Skegness, Mabel Thorpe, wherever, actually it's come from here, we could help them have a better education on X, Y and Z, and it's just highlighting it to that other authority as well, even if they cannot do anything, it's just highlighting it.
I think it's certainly, but obviously there is East Midlands as well as a national forum where, but as you say, the issue is in terms of prevention when the budgets are near the likes of Nottingham, we know what their finances are like, or not good. In terms of the general lessons for the whole council beyond the sort of health and public health, what other sort of lesson, because it's quite stark in terms of, when you look at the different areas, and as Derek has said, in terms of employment, in terms of veteran deprivation and age, it's quite interesting how there's a stark difference. I don't know, from a service delivery point of view, we probably knew that already, but it's quite interesting to look at it sort of from on highs. I don't know Davy, if there's any, any lessons we, anything we can do to actually use this corporately across the whole council?
Yes, thanks very much Leader. So it is a really interesting report, and I think you're right, it's not particularly new information, but presented in this way is certainly quite stark and I think makes the key messages and really reinforces the key messages as the things that we already know. We've planned to invite Derek to the Assistant Director Group and also to the staff briefings in January and February to begin to have that very debate around what can we do in service areas based on what the data is telling us to look at how we redesign our services. So we've absolutely recognised that we need to do that to look at what lessons can be learnt so that we can then implement it.
Thank you. Any further questions, comments? So recommendations are on page eighty-five, so that we note the contents report and approve its publication on our website. Is that agreed? Agreed? Thank you. I think then, Nigel, that concludes the meeting, doesn't it? So thank you for your attendance, ladies and gentlemen, the meeting is now closed.